Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are out of closed session and welcome back to our Ridgecrest City Council meeting. If I can go and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Marjorie O’Nan?
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come into your presence. Lord, thank you for the responsibility which has given to us the city council. Lord, let your will be done. Let fill us with your grace as we discuss many issues which are important to this community. Lord, let whatever we discuss, whatever the outcome we come up with, Lord, let it be to the benefit of this community. Lord, I pray for thee, our troops who are in harm’s way, protect them from all evil. I pray for our police department which protects our community. Lord, protect them from all evil. Lord, bless each one of us here, and I ask this in the most precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay. First thing is Attorney’s Report out of closed session. Martin?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. One item was discussed in closed session, potential litigation, and the only reportable action was that the council discussed, reviewed, and approved a draft letter that will be sent to the DWR regarding the facilitation process.
Thank you, sir. If I can ask the rest of the council to join me at the podium, we have a presentation to So tonight’s presentation of Key to the City has been submitted by Councilman Peggy Breeden, but she’s asked me to go ahead and present it on her behalf. It’s my honor to, this evening, recognize a local Ridgecrest citizen who embodies what it means to go on above and beyond for the sake of community when there’s very little in it for themselves other than the satisfaction of knowing that they’ve done a good deed. And for that person, it’s our pleasure to recognize Renee Westalux this evening with our Key to the City. So Renee is humble. Renee is humble. She’s dedicated. She calls in on the meetings. She shares her information. But more importantly, Renee is tenacious. And if there’s anything I’ve learned to appreciate about her over the past 18 months of working with Renee is her tenacity probably, single-handedly, helped save relationships that this community has had and continues to depend on for the next 10 years. But it was her tenacity and her efforts that probably helped to make that happen. Me and Dave Janik love to get up here and say, “We got a job to do,” and we got lots of information. And trust me, Dave was, “Dave, you’re out there. You are incredibly important, and you always will be a light in my eyes.” But we also, this is our job and our expectation, and it’s when a public citizen decides to take on the role of expectation with no reward that I am so proud to have this moment to recognize. Every 10 years, as you guys know, the U.S. Census is completed. From that census, there’s a process called the California Redistricting Commission that goes through the process of redrawing the lines for congressional districts, our state districts, and our Board of Equalization districts. So state assembly, state senate, congressional, and Board of Acquisition. And this committee does public inputs and public information, but I’m also not going to shy away from the fact that it has an incredible amount of private lobbying interests working throughout the process. And Renee stood up, and she, from day one, I still remember the email I got when she said, “Are you going to get up and take care of this or not?” And it probably took her about 20 minutes to get to the final sentence, but it told me that this is somebody who not only fully understands the issue but was advocating for her community in such an incredible way, there was no way to ever say no to her. And that’s what’s been the joy of working with Renee, is you don’t say no to Renee, or she’ll send you three more emails, and if you don’t respond to that one, she’ll send you another one. And she’s learned to work with me, which is also fantastic, and with Dave, and the three of us got to be a wonderful team. And during that 12-month process, leading all the way up until December 23rd, 2021, which is the Big Lots night I’ve mentioned on record many times, and spending six hours on hold to make one comment, but if that comment, I feel, is not made that night, and if the comments weren’t made two months earlier that she encouraged me to make, and the comments weren’t made two months before that that she encouraged me to make, and the comments that occurred in this dius that happened two months before that that she encouraged us to bring them in here, and if we didn’t know the people to talk to from day one, which she gave me a list of who’s who and who’s what, I truly believe that today we would be part of a different congressional district, and more importantly, that the important synergies that exist between Edwards Air Force Base and China Lake as a congressional district would have been severed. And while we can say, “Well, we don’t know what that would have done,” you’re right. We don’t. We don’t have a magic crystal ball that tells us that, but I can tell you that the $3.7 billion worth of reconstruction that’s happening on our base right now is a direct result of the relationships that Peggy Breeden, Kevin McCarthy, Sandra Feinstein, and so many other people had to ensure that the protection of this community was the first priority following the July 2019 earthquakes. And that happens because we’ve worked those relationships for so many years, and Renee stood up and said, “If you guys aren’t careful, you’re going to lose it.” And for that, that is why it is my honor to present to her the Key to the City of Ridgecrest in deep appreciation for your hours, and I do mean hours, of listening to commission hearings and telling us that at minute 5:05 of the seventh hour, somebody said Trona, and then you have to respond with this. And I cannot tell you how good you helped me look, how good you helped Dave Janik look, and it is my distinct honor and pleasure to present to you the Key to the City of Ridgecrest on behalf of the citizens, and thank you for your efforts during the entire redistricting process. Renee, can I have you, please, come forward? Renee, you helped make it happen. Thank you for all of your efforts with the redistricting on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ridgecrest.
Thank you.
You’re welcome. Would you like to say a moment?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I thank Mayor Bruin for making it possible for me to receive the Key to the City of Ridgecrest. I also thank all the members of the city council, David Janis, and other community leaders for their support and participation in giving testimony during the redistricting hearings. I am in real awe of receiving the key, and I am humbled by this extraordinary gesture of thanks from the city of Ridgecrest. Receiving this key to the city makes me feel so thankful my work on redistricting for 16 months has not gone unnoticed, and it feels so good to be appreciated by all of you. Receiving this key, I was passionate about working on redistricting because I realized that this valley needed to be in districts that would continue the strongest and most advantageous representation possible on the state and federal levels of government. I believe in this community and the mission of China Lake and will always support you. Redistricting started for me the end of September 2020 and did not end until Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. During the last 2.5 months, the virtual Zoom meetings were usually daily and ranging in different time segments, most lasting eight hours or longer. The last 14 days before the final maps were released, the CRC met every day, many of them way over eight hours. Most of all, I want to thank my dear, wonderful husband for his patience during the 16 months, especially during the last 2.5 months where he ended up listening to countless hours of the redistricting commission at our home on Saturdays, Sundays, and sometimes on weekdays during the dinner hour. He got to know the voices of all the commissioners almost as well as I knew them. Plus, he now misses the music the commission played during their breaks. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you, city of Ridgecrest.
You can get my photo up on the table?
Yeah.
I’m sure they can want a photo up here. Come on. Would you like to give it to us? Please. You sure? You guys standing next to me? It sounds like you put up with a lot of this, too.
Whenever you’d like to.
You can say we’re proud of you. And thank you.
Thank you, Renee, for all you do. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for everything. Yeah, thanks. This means a lot to us. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Let’s start express communion. Did somebody explain it to Travis?
No.
Oh, man. He’s half a pack. Okay. So once again, our deepest gratitude to Renee, and thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of the city of Ridgecrest. Next item on the agenda is our public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council’s jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council is going to take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his name or address. And is there any public comment from the floor? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the phones? I’ll give it a second or two for anybody who’s watching who’d like to chime in. Okay, seeing no public comment, we’ll go ahead and move on to council announcements. We’ll begin council announcements left to right. Kyle, any council announcements?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Tom?
As a member of Alta One Credit Union, I want to say that the acquisition of Mission Bank Ridgecrest branch by Alta One is official, so by the June 3rd. So Mission Bank will be closed, and it will open as Alta One Credit Union on June 6th. So that means one less commercial lending opportunity, so that’s what bothers me, actually. So, but yeah, so let’s hope things get better. So let’s hope that all the credit unions and banks in town would be able to meet the needs of our business community.
Dino. I don’t have any council announcements specifically that I can think of, other than it’s busier than snot, as always, so.
None here.
Okay. Next is our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of council or the public wishes to have an item pulled. If a comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed and will be removed from the consent agenda, and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public or the council to discuss the item before action is taken. There are four items on our consent calendar today. First is item number two, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council meeting dated May 18th, 2022. Three is proposed approval of increased appropriations to the fiscal year 2021/2022 budget for building professional services. Four is initializing staff to prepare an engineer’s report for the intent to levy and collect to levy and collection of assessments for Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District 2012-1 for fiscal year 2022/23 pursuant to the provisions of Part II of Division 15 of the California Streets and Highways Code and the announcement of a public hearing on June 15th, 2022 for the proposed assessment. Initializing staff to prepare an engineer’s report for the intent to levy and collection of assessments for drainage benefit assessment, District 2016-1, the district for fiscal year 2022/23 pursuant to the provisions of the Benefit Assessment Act of 1982, being Chapter 6.4 of the California Government Code, and the announcement of a public hearing on June 15th, 2022 for the proposed assessment. Do I have any member of the council which wishes to have an item pulled? Hearing none. Do I have any member of the public which wishes to have an item pulled? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, the consent calendar, as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Five ayes, motion carries.
We have four discussion items this evening. The first one is item number six, and this is approval of a resolution of intention to approve an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration and the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, Ms. Charlon. Yes. During a recent audit that CalPERS performed of several of their contracts, it was found that we have a clause in there that excludes part-time employees. Generally, CalPERS is only for full-time employees. What’s happened is our pact supervisor has gone over the hours many years ago, not recent, and because of that, they were put into the CalPERS system. So when CalPERS did the audit, they found that we needed to take that exclusion out so that we can have her in there, even though it is a part-time position. So that’s why it was, how it was found and why we’re doing it. And the way that it is done is we have to do a resolution of intention. I have to send that to the board. Then it will come back, and there will be a first reading and a second reading of an ordinance, and they have to be discussion items and done in public. So it’s just that simple. It’s just to remove the one sentence that says exclusion. Any questions for me?
I have one.
Yes, ma’am.
If we hire another part-time person, how does that affect what we do?
They will not be in CalPERS unless they go over the hours. They will be excluded as part-time, but if, for some reason, we have an emergency and they go over, then they will be allowed to go in with this.
So we can still hire part-time should we see the need?
Absolutely.
That was my concern. Thank you.
And that’s the hours that are already predefined, correct?
Yeah, I believe it’s 960 hours. Anything over 960 hours?
In the course of a fiscal year?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So essentially, if they’re exceeding the 35-hour rule, but they’re still being classified as part-time. Doesn’t that leave us a hole in terms of possible labor law liability in regards to part-time versus full-time classification for family medical leave, all that sort of jazz?
I don’t believe so.
No?
No, this just has to do with our contract with PERS.
Just, just. I’m just double-checking, because you wouldn’t normally have a part-time employee that then exceeds the hour who remains a part-time employee.
Well, you could have an employee that’s working 28 hours a week or 32 hours a week, and so it’s just, so if you’re just a little bit above the 960, but we still have a salary savings because that position may not require the full 40 hours a week, like our pact officer, do you believe we are at 32 a week, or is that less? Yeah, we’re at 32 a week. And so it’s less than 40 hours, so we are saving some funding, but on occasion, we don’t mind that position being, you know, within the retirement system.
Okay. 32 times 52 is... Is 960 too low? That’s what my brain is doing the math on, is because 960, if it was like 1300, that would make a little more sense.
I think it’s following the Social Security rules. Because I think, you know, when you’re working, when you’re taking your Social Security check, you can’t work more than 960 or a certain amount of money.
Yeah, but that’s specifically for retirement. I’m saying that the California state law has, California state law says there’s a certain number of hours that makes you a full-time or a part-time employee. If I’m correct, it’s 35.
Well, this has to do with municipal municipalities and PERS, so it’s a little bit different.
And again, what’s before the council today is simply a resolution which starts the process. The ordinance with all the changes will be before you.
Just poking little holes to see what water comes out.
And I just had a quick question for you, Rook. Is this just, can we see this is just a continued effort as you’ve done before at housekeeping? I ask that, I’m assuming other municipalities have had to go through and do some of the same kind of...
Correct, yeah. We were not the only ones audited. It was a cleanup of Contracts Act, CalPERS, that was found.
Roger. Thank you.
You’re welcome.
Yeah. When you see it started with September 20th, 1965, and has been amended seven times, you can usually get a clue that it’s probably something that’s just changed over time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from council? None? Any questions from the public? Any questions on the phones? Give it a second. Nothing on the phones? We’ll bring it back to council. If there’s no further council discussion, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number seven, a resolution to award a professional service agreement with Willdan Engineering in the amount of $103,78 and no cents to provide construction services for the West Ward Avenue Phase 1 project.
Good evening, council. I’ll try to keep this hour and 10-minute discussion brief. So what we’re here today to do is award a professional service contract for construction services and construction management, mainly inspection of our West Ward Phase 1 project. We’ve gone back and forth with Willdan and with their subs for QA, QC, and we’ve negotiated the best price possible. This contract is a time and material-based contract with an amount not to exceed, and pretty typical for any of our construction projects with three people, it’s pretty hard to have somebody out full-time with a contractor, and especially considering we work 410s and they work a five-day schedule. And with that, I’m open for any questions.
Okay, so we’ll bring it back to council. Any comments or questions? We’ll go ahead and start right to left. Peggy, anything?
No, I have none.
Scott?
When would they start the repaving process, roughly?
So we currently sit at 90% plans. We finished in-house survey of the project so we could design the ramps and verify we don’t have change orders like we did on the last project. So we’re working feverishly to complete the design of Franklin Street because we would like to try to reu-, excuse me, I’m sorry. We would like to try to reutilize the grindings from Ward. So we’re targeting a late summer start on this, but it’s still kind of a work in progress for what’s going on with Franklin, and I’ll have a better idea of a date, a more specific date in the next coming weeks.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate for the sake of the public again, so the fee is $103,78, but 83% of it is reimbursable, so we’re actually really talking about a city expense of about $17,000.
You are, you are correct. 83.56% of this is allocated through the RSTP program and will be reimbursed to the city. Our total allocation for the project is $742,000 and change.
Fantastic. Just want to make sure that point was reiterated. Outside of that, there’s nothing I can question about. Ward is getting done, guys. We’re coming. Tick, 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 tick. Anything? Yeah?
On the same lines, why only 83%? Why can’t we get 100% reimbursement?
So it’s based on the grant program. So this is a federal highways administration grant, and each grant program has a different allotment. Like, the California Clean Grant is 100% funding. The HSIP grants we got are 100% funding. These ones are 83% funding. I don’t know for sure if this is true, but my belief is there’s a clause in the contract that you sign that basically says you will maintain this within the next seven years. So it’s so some city money is on the hook to guarantee they get the maintenance, so that would be, that’s what my guess is, and also so it makes their funds go a little bit further because putting 100 grand to get 700 towards it is, on the whole project, is a pretty good deal.
So we have already applied for this grant, or?
We’ve already been awarded it. I’ve already got a request for authorization for constructions done. It’s basically good to go as soon as we finish the plans, and then we are also 90% done on Ward Phase 2. And I got some good news today in the T-TAC. It looks like there’s going to be a couple of jurisdictions that are coming down to the deadline to deliver a project and get an RFA. So in about a month, if they haven’t gotten their act together and gotten that, I’m going to be right there talking to Kern Cog to try to get Ward Phase 2 going, so that way we can do all of the work at once. And that’s part of why we packaged this. If you read the scope of work, they also have stuff in there for inspection of the sewer system from China Lake Boulevard all the way to down. So that’s why we packaged all the sewer work in with this project, is because we want to get all of our underground done now, so if that project gets delivered, we can pave one time and hopefully at the same time that we’re paving Ward Phase 1.
So once we get this 83%, it goes back into the Measure V fund?
Correct. So it will reimburse the Measure V fund. Measure V fronts it, and then the federal grant goes back into the Measure V fund.
Thank you, sir.
You have to use Willdan a lot or end up using Willdan a lot, and I think it’s important for the public to understand that, and I only know this because I’ve asked this question ad nauseam, but we never know who’s tuning in from one meeting to the next. So just quickly, I’m not asking for a long explanation, could you explain why you chose Willdan Engineering to go with this? And I understand they’re very well qualified. I actually sat and, you know, looked through everything, and I know we’ve used them before, but it’s important, I think, for the public to understand that when these things come before the council, we’re not just rubber stamping and sticking with one company because it’s easy for us.
You’re 100% correct. We actually have three firms that continuously bid on all of our projects. We’ve got QK, we’ve got David Evans &amp; Associates, and Willdan. This went through a detailed RFP, so Request for Proposal process, at which point we all, we got responses to the RFPs from all three consultants. Those three consultants were then rated by five people within the city staff, which we took those ratings and chose the best rating, and then from there, we negotiated fee, we opened their proposal, so that’s all based off of qualifications and familiarity with the area, familiarity with the project. We ran into some issues in the past where we’ve had, we’ve RFPed things for PE and CE separately, so you get one design firm that does the design, and then you have another firm that does the inspection. And when you don’t have a team that’s worked on it from start to finish, we’ve had a couple of issues with paperwork, who’s handling what, and gotten on some of the lists for inactive projects, and so that is way too. So if, from here on out, we’re not going to be bringing individualized ones to you, we want to do an RFP process for the whole project and award one contract that will cover the PE and the CE at the same time. So they do go through a rigorous process. We’ve reached out to numerous firms trying to get other people to bid on it, but quite frankly, Willdan just has a staff that knows the federal highways administration grants. They’ve got great inspectors that have acted as mentors towards my younger staff, and they’re tough to compete with. But we do follow the strict RFP guidelines when it comes to all these grant projects to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted.
Thank you for going, walking us through that. Appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion in council? No? Any other, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the phones?
But quite frankly, Weldon just has a staff that knows the federal highways administration grants. They've got great inspectors that have acted as mentors towards my younger staff. And they're tough to compete with. But we do follow the strict RFP guidelines when it comes to all these grant projects to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted.
Thank you for going, walking us through that. Appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion in council? No? Any other, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment on the phones? Give it a second. Okay, no public comment on the phones. We'll bring it back to council. Hearing no further comment, is there a motion for approval of the resolution as presented?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second?
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Travis. Next item is item number eight. Uh, this is Shree. This is budget discussions, which is a nice, open-ended, uh, realm of, of communication.
Good evening, council. So last week, we had our budget workshop. And so this is just an opportunity to ask any questions that anyone might have.
Shree, I wanted to say thank you. I learned more at that budget discussion than I have heard in all the almost eight years I've been at various budget discussions. You gave us the opportunity to ask questions. You presented it, so we understood what was happening. At least I understood what was happening. And I am proud that you, we could be a part of augmenting the vision and you can be a part of helping us fund the vision of what people have in this community. So I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say a huge thanks.
Thank you.
Scott?
I don't have any further questions. I was really happy and pleased to see the budget discussion go as it did. So fantastic job to you and the staff and our city manager, so. I'm good.
I don't have any questions, uh, to reiterate my fellow council members. You know, thank you for a great presentation. Everyone's was fantastic except for Travis's, which was long. But he has a lot of departments that he has to repeat that they've done this, this project in four different ways. And I, I respect that, and he explained that afterwards. But I think at the core of what really was fantastic last week is, again, the same thing that we've been saying, which is when we get out of the way of our staff and we actually encourage them to look for new ideas and to take on new opportunities and to reach for the best that their departments can do, we're going to get the best out of our staff. It's that simple. I think there's an incredible list of opportunities that we talked about last week. And I encourage everybody out there who wasn't watching to go and watch the YouTube. I mean, I understand you're going to say, well, it was three and a half, or three and a half, four hours, or five hours. There's no more fun four or five hours that you can find around town than listening to a budget hearing. And, and the reason is because there's no other opportunity you're going to get to hear about what really is happening in your community and where your tax dollars are being invested. It's real easy to jump on social media or Facebook or anything else and say, "I don't know where they're spending my money." And then compared to spending four and a half hours, or as we saw tonight, the type of dedication that Renee put into redistricting. When you dedicate yourself to having the knowledge of what's actually happening, you can't then defend positions that are based on the irrational. And that's what's really hard for people. And that's what was so exciting and fun about last week is I got to see the $3 million worth of road projects that we're doing. I got to see the, the gazillion projects that we've dropped on Nerissa's shoulders. I got to see the fact that crime is down in our community. Guys, did you not hear that last week? Because I know, I certainly did. I certainly know that this police department is under-resourced, undermanned, and they're still working twice and three times as hard to protect our citizens as, as, as similar communities that don't have the same type of, of social and community and, and bonds that we have being a rural, as a rural community in the middle of the high desert. And that was what you want to take from that. Don't take, oh, God, we talked about numbers for five hours. Because trust me, Travis didn't talk about numbers, he talked about slides. But what he did talk about, for sure, is he talked about what we're doing. And so I encourage everyone to go out there, thank you again to the staff. I don't have any questions because I would have had a whole bunch if there wasn't any staff in there. And I want to say to our staff again, we understand 5%, not enough. I can't say that more. I can't say that less. We know we're not at the goal line yet, but I hope you understand that we are making our best effort to move the ball down the field. And that's what really matters. It's not about how quickly you score, it's as long as at the end of the game, you're in that end zone and that you've done everything right to get your team there. And I think we're doing that. So thank you, that's all I, for the budget. It was fun.
Did you enjoy it as much as I did?
Yeah, I did.
I like, I love, I love numbers, people.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I echo the same comment, the comments which are made by fellow council members. So it's a well-rounded, well-presented budget. The only observation I made is it's very conservative. I'm hoping, uh, we come above 5% at least of the budget presented. So thank you so much for your hard work. I mean, I'm used to setting goals and trying to reach those goals. So that's how I look at a budget. So that's why I want to see a 5% growth. Thank you.
Echo the same sentiments. I won't drone on and on. But, uh...
I like it.
But, uh, I, you know, every year, I'm increasingly...
You don't have to run for reelection this year.
You're right, right. I'm increasingly impressed, uh, by your performance and your staff. I mean that genuinely. Like I've, I've watched, you know, I've been here not that long in the, in the scheme of things. But every meeting, you know, every one of these budget hearings, you're you're impressive. And so thank you for all the hard work you did. Thank you for the, thank you to the staff. And, um, looking forward to next year.
Okay. Is there any questions from the public in regards to the budget? Seeing none, is there any questions from, on the phones for the budget? No phone calls. Give it a second. Bring it back to the council. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Shree. I would say budget discussions are closed. Budget will be presented at the June 15th meeting for formal approval?
Yeah, I'll be on the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar for June 15th? We call, we consider that matter on its way. Okay, next item is item number nine, which is discussion regarding the board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman.
Thank you, Mayor. The GA has not met. We will be meeting next Wednesday. So I will have, um, more to, you know, be discussed on our next, um, city council meeting. So, uh, if anybody has any comments or questions, feel free to go ahead and ask.
Simultaneously, watch this. Here we go. Okay. You ready?
You know, Scott, usually I'd have a lot to, uh, throw your way, but... We'll, we'll wait till next meeting.
Very good. You know what I'm going to say? I'm going to say one thing. Is, is, is I know there's people out in the audience that might be watching this on YouTube and saying, "We're not taking this seriously," or "We're not doing that." That is absolutely not what's happening. You are seeing camaraderie and work together, not joking. I may seem like that, and, and I'm just waiting for it because I know somebody's going to say it, but that's not what's going on. This is what happens when a team gets in rhythm. They understand each other and they know what each other's passions are. So while I might rattle on and 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 on, that's what it is to be a team. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks, Kyle, for moving the meeting along. Any other comment?
I would like to add on to that. What that does is when you ask the questions, I think I know what I believe. And I appreciate you asking questions that make me go, "Wait a minute, Peggy, maybe you've got a point." And you generally do. And you answer, and, and you ask the questions that elicit answers that maybe other people have. And I've heard you say it over and over again. I'm not necessarily asking just for me, but I'm asking for people who have talked to me. So keep talking to us. Allow us to ask your questions if you don't feel comfortable. But I learn a lot from those questions. And I, it makes me, I'm so sure of what I think. Until I hear the question, I go, "Yeah, maybe, maybe he's right. Maybe it's a good question that made me think." So I thank all of us. Well, you're right once in a while.
Every once in a while.
You know, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But what that makes us do, it makes us stronger because we can depend on each other to say, "What about? How come? Why? How can we do it better?" And I appreciate my council. We have the strongest, best council who understands we can disagree on some things, we can learn from each other. But you know what? We grow and this community benefits because of who we are, working together, and how you work with us. And together, public and council, what a team. Way to go, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you, Peggy. Any other comments? I have nothing on the, the groundwater until we get to the next meeting. Any other comments or questions? Groundwater? Any comments or questions from the public on groundwater? It exists, it's underwater, it's underground. It's underwater. It's water that's underwater underground? There, there is surface water, okay. Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, I'll give it a few seconds. Okay. So we will move on, uh, bring it back to council and no other discussion. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is committee reports. We would normally have, uh, the infrastructure committee. That meeting did not occur.
Yeah, we, we asked Travis to cancel. We didn't have anything beyond updating streets. He had just done that at the prior city council meeting, so we didn't need to, um, we need to go through that.
Well, it was last Thursday, right?
Well, yeah, we did, we talked about the budget hearing.
Well, it was supposed to be the infrastructure, it was last Thursday.
Yep.
I wouldn't want to have listened to him anymore either.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, we got an entire infrastructure committee meeting in Travis's hour and 10 minutes of, of slides, so. And that was incredible, it's fantastic, just to see, I mean... I, I still remember because I took pictures of the roads list as, as you were doing it because you're like, "Well, I'll get you the list later." I'm like, "No, no, I want the list right now. I need that reference material." Very cool stuff. City Org is meeting tomorrow. Quadia Life is meeting a week from Tuesday, or a week from yesterday. Any other commissions, boards, or committees?
Yeah, uh, KernCog, since last meeting, uh, there wasn't a whole lot to report out of that one, other than, um... I asked a question that I've seen out there in the public a few times. That's when, when is the light going to go on at Jack's Ranch? And I've yet to get an answer. Three weeks roughly, says Travis. That, that wasn't on you because, uh, even after I talked to you, I got ahold of Caltrans and asked them as well. And they said, "We'll get back to you," and they never got back to me.
They're, they're waiting on Edison's plan for power.
Okay, so nobody can hear that, but, uh, we're waiting on Edison's plan for power. That'll be approximately three weeks that light will go on at Jack's Ranch Road. Thank you. Other, you know, we'll have economic development this month, and we'll be able to report out on ICSC and how that went.
Okay, any other? Okay. City manager report?
Uh, yes, just a couple items. Uh, one, uh, the well is currently being repaired. Uh, we anticipate it being back online by the end of the week. Um, the splash pad is down. Uh, we had to take the pump over to Bakersfield to get, uh, fixed. Uh, we're also looking at a way of maybe purchasing a standby pump. So if this occurs again, we can just swap them out. And then last, uh, but not least, uh, we will bring, be bringing the Waste Management Franchise Agreement update, a reinstatement to council on July 6th. I'm hoping to get you guys a copy of that full agreement here in the next week, so you have a chance to take a look at it and then, uh, ask, uh, staff any questions you may have before the meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Future agenda items? Any future agenda items? Okay. Mayor and council comments? We'll go left to right on that one. Kyle, anything? Solomon?
Talk of the town, Top Gun. I proudly tell my friends and relatives out of town that it is filmed in Richcrest, so that's a great thing. So really proud of what has happened and the Film Commission taking all the steps to support, airport, supporting all the shooting that has taken place there.
Can I just go ahead and, and throw a shout-out also on the heels of that to Kelly Walden and the entire team at Richcrest Cinemas? You know, it's rare when we get to have a, a party like that. But to see so many of our servicemen get the opportunity to come out and so many members of our community, you know, you did, you did really nicely. Considering that was our number-one thing that got hit in the earthquakes and to see it so proudly out in front, an industry that was crushed by COVID and still standing here today after all their years, uh, as part of this community. So kudos to Richcrest Cinemas and the entire team there. You guys did a, did a heck of a job. And yes, my, my 10-year-old and 7-year-old who, who decided to interrupt the middle of the Top Gun screening while everyone was watching, asking questions, greatly appreciated. Is that, is that home? So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I got, kind of a go-back real quick.
Sure.
So, uh, last night I had the opportunity to meet with a member of the public who wants to run for council. So we sat for a couple hours and just had general discussion about what it's like to be on the city council, issues that we're facing. I tried to be objective as possible. And it was, uh, it was a good, it was a good conversation. But that's just to, to put out to the public that I'm welcoming those conversations. Please get ahold of me. I welcome any council members to, to team up with me if that's desired. Maybe you don't want to talk to me, that's, that's valid. Maybe you want to talk to any of the rest of them. But whatever the case is, you know, we haven't, I mean, November comes quicker than, quicker than you think. So if you have a desire to run for city council, send me a message. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's great. City council or mayor, because both seats will be up for, for reelection.
I was just going to thank Kelly and her team, and you've already done it. So thank you all.
Mine is just, once again, it's, it's June. It's beautiful outside. It's great to see our kids out playing soccer at the fields and, and to imagine that we have such a, such a crisis of fields that we're, we're shoveling people around means everyone's getting outside, outdoors and enjoying it. Hey, I know that there's been, you know, a, a COVID case here and a COVID case there. Here a case, there a case, everywhere a case, case. But at the end of the day, um, it is, it is so nice to see our community out doing our things, getting involved, enjoying the Memorial Day. I didn't mean to talk to you, watch. And at the end of the day, that's what makes Richcrest so special is we're getting into our hot season and, 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 you know, we're going to have our cooling centers open. We're going to have our splash pads open. We're going to have our, our Parks and Rec summer camps open and seeing the church camps. This is what made Richcrest so special for so many years is all of those community events coming together. And I'm so excited to see them coming together this summer. I hope everyone has a great first week to June. And I have nothing further other than to say thank you to our staff, our team, and we will see you on the 15th of June.